Good evening, everyone. I was not here last month, and so I'm happy to be back with my colleagues. I want to know if everybody had a chance to look at the minutes?
Yes.
And if there are any amendments to them?
No.
Yes.
My name is Jim, and I must say, my report is a bit too long. But the intention is just to give you a comprehensive background to the budget.
Very good.
Next time, if it's short, I'll just say we're interested in meeting the votes.
Okay. Okay. You're good. That's it. Oh, wow.
We'll need more information.
I'd like to make an emotion. I'd like to make another motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of December 12. All those in favor?
I...
Who made the motion?
Oh, I made the motion. Sorry.
I'll second.
So, Deidre and Whitney.
Yes.
Thank you.
Jessica. Jessica's taking notes. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Great.
One more signature. Red. Blue. Sorry.
It's okay. Okay.
Thank you.
So, Tom, we are going to go to financial reports. Do you have anything?
I don't have a financial report, except that we are just in a general sense, as we round into the second half of the fiscal year, we're doing well, we're on track. No deficits. As a matter of fact, we're in very good shape as we move forward. But I do want to talk about a statistic that I think you all find very interesting. And it relates to what happened at the December meeting, which was the decision by the Board to suspend fines for the loan of juvenile material. And so with that policy in place, which I have to tell you, I'm very happy and excited about as our patrons.
Including those the best who have kids.
That's right. That's right. We all have fallen into that category. We have started the process of letting our community know, and they're very excited. And we also undertook the project of going back retrospectively and looking at, as many as we could find, which we asked the county to do a search, of all the people, both children and adults, who have fines on their cards that relate to juvenile material. And so our staff worked very hard and went through the process of eliminating fines for everybody retrospectively, which has meant that a lot of people who, you know, technically couldn't use the library, fully use the library because of their fines, are now using the library. And I have just some statistics.
Great.
So, our staff went in and they encountered 272 accounts or patron cards where there are juvenile fines, but they could not be dealt with because the books are currently out. Once they come back, then we can, you know, take care of this matter. We encountered 197 patrons who had fines and lost material. And so we, part of our decision was not to forgive lost material, but for fines. And so the fines for those 197 cardholders have been wiped out. But the most impressive statistic is that our staff went in and eliminated the fines on the cards of 744 people, which meant that they can now use the library. So, 744 people, many of whom could not use the library because they were locked out now...
Well, they could use the library, they can't take it down.
Well, they couldn't borrow materials. They could walk in the door and other things. But I think that's really significant.
Well, I actually think that says something about our population, not in America, like we're not... 700 is a lot.
It's a lot.
So, what are people doing with the books?
Well, sometimes people will bring the books back, but they're just, they have accumulated fines. And I just want to give you an example of an email that I received from a staff member talking about an incident in relation to this decision. And one of our children's librarians had sent to me, "We had a really great moment here. Mom came up from the art club raving about how much fun it was, and her girls wanted to take out books. I overheard her say they couldn't, as they had a fine she could not pay off. The librarian said, 'Let's check and see if there are overdue fines or lost and see what we can do.'" It was nearly $50 in overdue fines only. She checked with one of our circulation staff members, and since all the fines are children's books, we're able to forgive them. The mother was overjoyed. She said it was the second Christmas, and the girls took out four books. It was so great to see how delighted the kids were to be able to check out books. Final comment from the staff member, "Love this generous patron positive policy." It's a great, it's a great story, and it's good what we're doing. And in six months' time, we will come back to you with more information, so we can really understand the implications of it.
Now, and other libraries are doing this in Westchester, too. We were kind of...
Oh, there are. We're not the first. Yonkers has been doing it for a number of years. White Plains implemented over a year ago. Mamaroneck. And I think there are a few others throughout the county, I'm just not entirely certain. But the libraries that I mentioned are more relevant to us. So, I just thought that was a cool statistic and story.
Thank you for sharing that.
Do you have anything else?
I don't.
Statistics?
No, just that, you know, with our new circulation area, we're finding people are very happy about the area, they're finding it efficient, and the patrons are slowly but surely starting to use the patrons self-checkout. And what my, what all the staff have told me, no surprise to any of us, that while the adults have a learning curve, the kids get it immediately and love to use it, and it's just making things go quickly.
It's kind of a dead space out there, just Dan and I were noticing where the self-checkout is.
Oh, we're gonna, we're gonna improve that. First of all, we're waiting on the signage, which we need to do. And actually, our signage person is, I guess, out of the country. So, we're trying to figure out where that person is. Are they coming back? And do we need to go elsewhere? The other area, other issue is, we are going to be changing the tile that wraps around that area and using a material that will look similar to the desk. And then we will bring all of the patron-placed holds, which are currently across from the information desk. So, it'll all be ported there.
I see. I see. So, you're taking the rugger?
No, not the rugger. It's the shelving is there. We're gonna take the tile on the wall behind the shelving, and it wraps around into the lobby, that white tile. And it really wraps around and goes nearly to the entrance, to the Long Street entrance.
Okay.
As well as on the entrance to the library proper in the lobby, we're going to be taking that down, changing it, and putting up nice signage as well.
Okay.
That's still, those are actually the last components of the project, and then we can say we're done.
The library looks nice.
Thank you.
It really looks good. WLS report?
Okay. No, we didn't meet last time. So, our next meeting is later this month. But, Tom, if you don't mind me saying that we had a visit by the outgoing President John Ryan.
Okay.
Right. Just before the holidays began.
Yes, before the holidays. And we came out to work out and show around that, like, different, like, rooms, meet the staff, and we had a little performance with the staff. And I think it was an honor of the lab, right? And we saw impressed by what he saw, took our notes, and he gave us some inspirations that we took from him, that we were very impressed with. And so, I think that was a very good idea. And probably a good idea. I don't know if you have played something?
Just briefly, that it was a really nice afternoon, morning into afternoon. And Sean had, he was the one that told us that we had received more state grant money than any other library in the county, double the library that is number two. And he wanted to see all that we did, and he did. And it's exciting, and we can be proud that we have made these changes, and proud that, frankly, almost all of it has happened without taxpayer dollars per se from New Rochelle. It's state money, our foundation money, sometimes the friends were able to pitch in. But the one highlight I want to, I want to make is, when I introduced Sean to our staff, I asked the staff to be very frank about the failings of our system, our WLS system. And they all were true to form, and they said, you know, "We're having problems, and it's, you know, with VDI, the sign-on to the computers and the software." And, you know, Sean is, he's an impressive man, and he took notes, and I just thought it was important for him to hear from line staff rather than an administrator, you know, the problems that we're facing. And not just us, other libraries throughout the county. So, it was, it was a good visit on a lot of levels.
And it was a great time.
And I thank Francis, he was a great ambassador to Sean and represents us very, very well at Westchester HQ. And so, it was a good, it was a good morning-afternoon.
Great. So, Francis, you don't have anything else?
No.
Okay. President's report. I guess the only thing, two things I'm gonna mention. One is that we, as you can see, we are missing a board member, a trustee.
Two.
Two. Well, one, Chuck's not here, but Udir is gone. So, we are gonna be filling that position, as we talked about. We put an ad out. We received 10 resumes, and we will be interviewing them...
23rd.
The 23rd. And then we will make a decision. And the plan is to have somebody in place for the February meeting, if we can get it done. So, we have, we've all received all the resumes, and we're just waiting on our schedule.
Actually, it's in, it's in your folders. Out of the 10 candidates, we have scheduled nine of them, thanks to Jessica for being so diligent and reaching every step, every candidate. We're just waiting on one candidate who has not yet responded to either email or phone.
Great.
We assume they will, and we'll be ready to roll.
Great. So, that's good. And then the only other thing I had was, I received something, this is from my fellow trustees, I received something from, and she sent you a copy. Kena sent me, who's a past president, and I'll forward it to all of you, but it came today. The Smithsonian Libraries in the city are hosting an opportunity, it's a happy hour from 5:00 to 8:00 on February 27th, to learn about kind of the libraries and the latest educational programs. It says over drinks. That's not what I'm pushing, but, I mean, it's all fine, but Traveling Trunks is our new resource lending program. These multimedia library kits are packed full of resources. So, it's for libraries, and I thought, as trustees, Tom, if you're going...
I'd like to go.
Sure, it's in the city. If anybody, particularly for you guys who work in the city, if anybody wants to go as a trustee, it's a good way to learn what other people are doing, and it's free.
It's February 27th.
But I'm gonna forward this to you.
What?
5:00 to 8:00. Beach and interactive demonstration. So, whenever we can get out and see what other libraries are doing, I think it's really helpful. So, I just wanted to mention that, and I don't think...
I'll go. I'm writing your work.
Okay. Okay. Great. Yeah, 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 I'm gonna email it to you, but you might have to remind me. I think that's it. All righty. Tom?
Okay. Thank you, Deidre. Again, just going through the litany of grants that we're waiting on. We did finally, a few months ago, receive our most recent New York State Library grant of $140,000. That's for the first phase of the renovation of the second floor. And we're waiting on receiving final prices from our vendors. And so, we're anxious to get them. I've been told that we'll be getting them early next week. And once we get them and we okay them, we will place the order, and we hope to start the process. You know, we've already started doing some things in the teen area in anticipation of the changes that we'll be making in that space. So, that's exciting. The grant monies that we received to upgrade the Huguenot Children's Library furnace, hot water heater, and some other infrastructure issues, we received the money, we did the work. The weather, the cold weather's here, and we're all glad that it's done. So, that's good news. The next grant, which is our, I think, I believe our biggest state grant, is for $283,000. It's the second phase of that second-floor renovation project. That will not arrive until August or September of this year. It's 2020, next year. And we're excited about that. And with that in place and complete, the second floor should be in really great shape and should look as good and be as functional as the first floor. And of course, we're waiting on the grant for HDL, which is the replacement of the stairwell that connects the lower level and the first floor. Let's see what else. We talked about our library trustee recruitment. That's moving along very nicely. Today, earlier today, our staff attended a workshop, I think Daniel was probably there too, about the RXR grant, and you may want to talk a little bit more about it. But RXR has apparently made a pot of money available for, you know, enhancement efforts throughout the city, and it's tied to children and teens, I believe. Yeah. And so, we're interested. We want to learn more about it. We have some potential projects, and we'll be sharing that as we go forward. It's a, it's a really short deadline, isn't it?
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
Is it tomorrow?
Yeah, it's really short, which I don't really understand. And, well, anyway.
Tell us how you feel.
No, you know what? Less is more is always the way to go, and so I'll leave it at that.
You know, one thing I didn't talk about is, we had this great meeting with those developers, but we really had not come together about kind of what our next steps are, what we're gonna push them on.
This is about the main and Memorial Highway development that's proposed.
Yep, yep. And the two things I had really mentioned was maybe doing something with the courtyard area to make sure it matches whatever they do with the veterans area. And I mentioned something else, I don't remember, but I wanted to make sure we were all who were at that meeting clear on kind of what the next steps are. So, I'll send out an email, maybe we can send out together, but I just think we need to continue to be in their face about what we ask for.
Absolutely.
I mean, it was great, it was nice. And they actually mentioned us at the planning meeting, but I don't want to be mentioned as kind of to say, "So, I'm doing it." I want to make sure we keep the pressure on it to get from them. The parking was the other issue.
The parking was a significant issue.
The article that...
Yes, I know.
Was wrong.
It said that we were consolidating or something.
I read like collaboration.
Yeah, it's not true.
That we were, that we had to work with the courtyard.
Right, right. It said we're collaborating. It said we are consolidating. Like, it was, it was wrong. And I corrected it, but it's how things get started, and they have legs, and then people say stuff, and it's not true. That's not what came out of the meeting at all. So, the big thing, obviously, that came out of me is, we asked for parking, and they said they looked into it. But I just want to make sure we all have our next steps in line, so that we can stay on top of it. And it can be kind of a model for anybody who comes after them, to say, "They're gonna be on you, they're gonna stay on you, they're gonna..." So, you know.
Were there stated next steps after that meeting?
No, there were stated requests. We didn't have stated, so, Tom. There's another Tim.
There's another Tim.
Yeah, there's a Tim.
A more important one.
Yeah, yeah, Tom, and I will come up, we'll kind of summarize it for everybody and come up with what we believe the next steps would be, but I'd want your input to say, "No, you're wrong, I remember this," whatever. So, okay, that's...
Meeting, and they seemed to listen, and they heard our concerns about the shade study once again, which I'm still extremely anxious about if this building does indeed go up. And the parking, they were interested. I have heard that there have been additional meetings where people have talked about their concern that relates to their decision to take down every building in that five-flat footprint, which is really unfortunate, because a few of those buildings have historical significance, great art deco buildings.
Yep.
And some of them have current businesses there, you know.
Everybody's getting this place, just about downtown. Just don't see it. Including my church. Including us.
Question, too, about the project that's going into the former Chase Building. Did we hear anything back after we appeared at the planning board meeting?
So, the response was, let's, those guys, yes, we did. They're in, they're in San Francisco or California, those developers. So, they don't, they won't be here for a while. But the agreement was, let's get on the table for the next one, and so when they come back, we need to meet with them, just like we did with, what's the name of this one that we met with? Main? They have a name, the developers, and a lot of them. No, she was talking about...
The main Memorial Highway.
So, yes, what came up is, we will make sure you are on the docket to meet with these people. They're not here, they're not in town, but, you know what's here? Again, we need to stay on it, so Tom and I can kind of get back in and say, "We'd like to meet with them, just like we met with the other ones, and we should go all again together and meet and have our requests." It was a... Okay.
And another building sold today.
Where?
The corner of Division, right next to Curtain Shop.
Oh.
But I don't know what the plans are.
Is Curtain Shop going out of this?
There might not be plans for that. No, 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 no. But that furniture store?
Oh, yeah.
But when you just mentioned the shadowing, you know, no one, I hate to say no one, no one is actually putting out a, I'm gonna use the word schematic, because I can't think what else to say.
Schematic.
Because if you took every building and every season and overlaid it...
You asked for that.
Well, right. So, we were at one meeting, and you could see, I'm just making this as an example, Ruby D Park's dark, let's just say, for three seasons between 3 and 6.
Exactly.
Right. But no one's saying Building 2 is between 1 and 3. And no one's saying Building 4 is between 9 and 12. So, I've kind of put it in my brain that Ruby D Park may be dark forever.
So, that's something we need to have on our list.
And I feel like I just had a big mouth saying that, but it, and there's nothing we can do, there's nothing we can do about it, because it doesn't matter.
So, I have a question.
Well, no, because they have, they've done it already. Because it is what it is.
It is.
Yeah, it's already been approved and/or to be approved.
But, but, you know, I think the bottom line, Beth, with your business sense, neither project is a done deal.
Yeah, that's true, too.
Because they need to get the investors to buy in, and I, from what I understand, neither project has 100% financing in place, so...
But with that in mind, let's say, this project doesn't happen. It doesn't make that down the line.
Maybe someday else, yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
It may happen.
Absolutely.
I mean, if that's for us to, you know, knock on wood, that these projects don't happen, then we'll be good and ready, much more prepared for the next developer that may come in and do the, you know...
So, I think we can ask Kevin to put together a schematic, which says, "Looking at the buildings and the data we have from the buildings, when are we dark cumulatively?"
So, the shade study only factors in that one building?
Yes, yes.
Okay, it's not a...
They're not including the 11 Lot Street building or any other building. It's, and what I thought was interesting about the shade study was...
It's not really straightforward.
Well, it gets even...
Well, each development has its own shadow study.
Right. And it gets more interesting because they presented a document in which they pulled out a few months out of the year in certain times, and they'd say, "The wedge of shadow was here at Ruby D Park, not the library, at 9 o'clock. And then, you see, it's here on the other side of Ruby D Park at 3. Well, hello, what happens between 9 and 3?"
It just jumps across.
Right. It's a big skip. Yeah.
So, I think that's a good thing to say to Louise, like, "Okay, so you guys work for us now, you're in the city, put this together. What does this look like all day long? You know, this is your job as, you know, development." So, I think that's a good ask. So, you and I can put something together, and I'd love everybody to have input into, and particularly the language that you're using, however you use it, just when you get the email, you'll...
Use it again.
So, use it again.
Use it again.
So, so we'll put something together, and we're just gonna have to stay on it and follow up and follow up and follow up.
My name is Jim, two questions. Do you, and I mean this sincerely, do you feel that these contracts are really useful? Do you think you're changing minds, or are people just welcoming you courteously, giving you a cup of coffee, and say, "Oh, well done," and then you go?
So, it would be great, it would be great if we could get some parking out of this.
Number one. Number two is, do you think that our friend Ramos could be in a position to help?
Udir.
Udir.
So, we can try. I'm not sure.
Yes, since he's now in the center of our...
So, you know what? The city council's changed. It's a new animal. I think as a group, perhaps, they could, but it's certainly worth, you know, it's a very different group now. And so, the group that made all of this possible is pretty much gone. There's some people still there, but the group that passed all this, it's really changed, just as the library board that was around when all this happened has changed. And so, I think it might be worth it to go back to them and maybe have a meeting with them and say, "Can we sit down and talk to you guys as a city council, since you've changed? And since Udir is there now and certainly has a much, it's, you know, a much closer feeling about it." And does it matter? Do I think, the buildings are coming. I'd like to exact as much pain as I can to get what we need. You know, we need, we need parking.
In addition to parking, you know, studying our park and the shadows?
Yeah.
And what harm it could cause to the plantings?
And the wind.
On the wind!
The wind, the wind yesterday was incredible. Incredible on Memorial Highway, parking my car, walking into the library, and I thought, "Wow, what happens when that building goes up? We're gonna have to have..."
Weren't we supposed to be, like, planting more trees? And, I mean, there's a lot of things that we could point to, but, you know, one would hope that it could lead to putting that notion in everybody's minds that we're losing this sunshine and the open space, and that it could prompt, you know, somewhere in the vicinity, some more open, it doesn't excuse the destruction of a beautiful historic park, but there could be some good that can come of it that we can't see yet while we add things we know we want, like parking, and, but I think, I think there's every reason to stay...
Vigilant.
No, no, no. I agree. It shows that we are not passive, you know, we're actively, actively involved.
That's right. And come up with solutions.
And we are monitoring what's happening.
Right. Come up with solutions to propose to them. They can say no, but we gotta keep trying, you know? And it's, if they can't be innovative, we have to be, and just keep throwing things until something sticks, something hopefully would.
And I mean, if there are any pressure points that we could use to...
Yes, yeah.
I mean, Idoni, for example, is involved in the library, I don't know what influence it could, and things like that. I mean, whatever resources of influence that we could use to reinforce our intervention.
I do think you raise a good point, in that it might be time to go back to the city council, because it's different now. And some of those people were very vocal in the past.
But the zoning is our...
Already done. It's done.
So...
What could they do?
Well, so, you have who's in charge of the development, so that's...
He's been there.
Well, I'm just saying, so Louise Aragon is really, he's the head guy now.
Yeah, yeah.
He's the one, you know, not pulling the strings, but he's...
He's making the decisions.
He's making the decisions.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But they could, they're the city council. They made the zones, they can, they can make changes. If anybody's gonna make changes, like huge changes, it would be them. Um, but I don't know, it's all, we're, we're stuck, because here we are, and here come the buildings.
Yeah.
So, you know, and they are gonna impact us, they will impact us, so, sorry.
No, no, that's okay, I just have just a few, um, small items. One is Foundation, um, our next, our next board meeting is the twenty first, the Foundation Board Meeting at seven forty-five. And, um, the Foundation is really moving forward in regards to their, uh, May thirtieth event called the Scavenger Hunt for the City of New Rochelle. And, um, Chris Ellen is spearheading this in her inevitable style, you know, going forward. Could be something that'd be a lot of fun, and also raise quite a lot of money for the Foundation, which will ultimately come to the library, so.
Can you say a little bit, have you, had you?
I have a.
Does everybody know about the scavenger? You wanted to say a.
Sure, yep.
So people know a little bit about what it is.
The, um, the, uh, scavenger hunt that will take place on May thirtieth will be actually, um, uh, an event that will be participatory. It's not a sort of a passive event where you go to a, a, a fancy gala or function. It's an opportunity to do a scavenger hunt that relates to the City of New Rochelle. And Chris and the Foundation are working with, um, a vendor with an app, and it'll be virtual, and you can capture certain things. And there'll be a, a competition, and there will be teams that will win, and the idea is that there will be teams, um, teams will, can come together, any, any group of people, uh, uh, four or five in number, and they will be in a car, have to be in a car, and go around the city working on this scavenger hunt. And it will only go on for a few hours, I believe it starts at four and maybe ends at six or seven.
And it's twenty-five dollars?
Twenty, twenty-five dollars to participate, and so it's not a, um, it's not a horribly expensive event. Now, what the Foundation is hoping to do is that for people who, teams who, and people who participate, they can get sponsors. No different than, say, a, a walk for, um, um, a disorder or a disease, get people to sponsor your participation, and that money will come back to the Foundation. And there will also be opportunities for sponsorship as well. And so, um, um, uh, organizations in the city, for example, the Rotary, our Rotary Club, Francis, I'm hoping, I'm pushing for, um, a sponsorship. And there'll be other nonprofits and groups and businesses, et cetera, that will participate, and all the money, of course, as always, will come back to the library, so we can continue to do, um, a, a great job to improve libraries, uh, building and services. So this will have more publicity, uh, in, in the near future. I, they're just sort of getting started right now, tonight at seven o'clock, they had, I believe, seventeen people photographed here in the library who are captains, who have promised that they will raise a team of four to five people who will participate in the scavenger hunt and, you know, raise money for, for the Foundation, for the library. So it's, it's, it's exciting, it's fun, it's a little different, and, um, I hope, um, anyone in the audience or further out will consider, uh, participating. It'll be a, a great time.
It's also great for New Rochelle.
It's focusing on New Rochelle, it's not some artificial scavenger hunt, it's all about the history of New Rochelle, finding places and things. And I just want to talk about, um, the Friends, who are, again, equally wonderful group. Um, Amy Teetz has, um, uh, commissioned me to share this exciting news. Through the end of twenty nineteen, the Friends gave us ninety-six thousand dollars, which is a new record, which is really extraordinary.
Excellent.
And all, all went to the lo, all went to the library, its programs, services, improving the collection, um, some, uh, preservation of some of our art pieces. And, uh, the Friends work really hard, you know, day in, day out, managing about a thousand book donations a week. And so if anybody in the audience wants to, uh, do something meaningful and have fun, I would ask you to consider reaching out to Amy or reaching out to me. And, um, it would be great, worthwhile work, uh, meaningful work, and, and fun, too. Oh, and, um, next book sale is, sorry, February twentieth, twenty-first, and twenty-second, with the Friends Board Meeting of, uh, February twenty-sixth. This is all in your folder, and the Friends are doing something different, instead of having a book sale every month, we're, um, doing fewer book sales. I think we're doing, one, two, three, seven book sales. But it's really because, um, our lobby is so busy with our art shows, and the Friends bookstore is making a tremendous amount of money. This fairly new bookstore is, has now the big moneymaker, it's not the monthly book sales, you know, so.
Okay.
So it's, it's, it's working out. That's it.
For sale?
Yep, just a few things. Um, I've been talking about our, our newest employee, David Rose, he is the archivist for our library. He started on January second, I'd like a motion, um, to approve his, um, employment here. Uh, his salary, his annual salary is sixty-six thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
Um, I make a motion to approve the, um.
David Rose.
To improve the employment, uh, hiring of David Rose at a salary of sixty-six thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
He's hired.
He's hired, all right. And David has started on January second, and I honestly can tell you, he has made a big difference already. He's a great guy, and he's a hard worker, and he's pulling together all our great historical records, which are sort of scattered throughout the building in different places. And he's a, um, a, a highly credentialed, uh, archivist, is at the March of Dimes there, um, archivist for many years. He's written a few books, is involved professionally, so he's a real find, and, um.
Great.
I expect that you're going to see, um, his, you know, his work output is gonna be meaningful in terms of digitizing collections and organizing things. His first collection he's working on, just as a quick by the by, is, um, a donation that we received recently, which is the League of Women Voters of New Rochelle, which is an important, um, donation, because it's, it's hundredth anniversary, and Carrie, Ch, Carrie Chapman Cat um, was the founder here in New Rochelle, and of course she had a national prominence in regards to suffrage movement, et cetera. And so David is well on his way to, uh, putting together this, this great collection.
I think, I think I can endorse that, I had a, a good chat with him during this tough, uh, holiday lunch.
You did.
He's a very personal guy, a personal guy, very, uh, knowledgeable and enthusiastic, he's really rich to go. So I think he's a great asset, I had a very good impression of him.
Thank you, Francis. Oh, and just a few more things, um, um, I actually spoke with, uh, the Civil Service Commissioner, and the position that you folks allowed us to do, which was, um, a promotional opportunity for, to a library, to head of Huguenot Children's Library, will go to the Civil Service Commission next week and, and will be approved. And we're also looking for a, um, hourly library clerk, one of our clerks got a full-time job, good for him. And he'll be here occasionally on the weekend, so we need somebody else, and we'll be posting that too as well.
Is that it?
That's it.
This is, this is gonna be quick. Um. You have a lot. Uh, so budget, um. Yep, um, so the budget can be, and I guess the only thing I would say to everybody is if you have any items that you'd like us to add into the budget or that you think we need to be aware of, could you let, um, the chair know? Let Beth know, okay? Because we're meeting the end of the month. Okay. Uh, buildings and grounds?
I think just that our meeting with APS has moved back now.
It has moved back.
For the draft of the building audit, so we'll get that mid-February as opposed to sooner.
Next week. Um, and, um, unfortunately, um, Doug Emilio, the architect, the principal, who's managing the building audits for both buildings, we had a conversation. We started later than we wanted to, which put them behind the eight ball, and of course, the holidays, so he was very apologetic. But he said, I could produce a, a documents for you, he said, but I'm not sure they would be as complete, they'd be rushed. So, uh, my thought was, why, this is a, an opportunity for us to really understand our building, why rush it? Why get something that's, you know, half complete? And he was very apologetic, but he will have something available mid-February, so I'm gonna do a, a doodle poll. Um, and hoping that we can, um, meet before the February board meeting, maybe we'll have a sense of things, and we'll get the report prior to that, and I will do that doodle poll tomorrow.
So that's the sixteenth meeting is, is not happening?
Right, yes.
He, he sends an email right before.
Oh, you did, okay, I got it, okay.
He didn't get a chance to see it, but unfortunately it's not, but I'm, I'm hopeful that we will, will get this meeting in, in place, uh, prior to the February board meeting. And, uh, and the firm that we hired, um, Russ Watzke, and, and an architect, have started the process of looking at the Huguenot Children's Library roof, just so that we fully understand what needs to be done, and what's particularly appealing, um, to working with Russ and his team is not only do they come highly regarded, but they have historic buildings. So, and we know that Huguenot Children's Library is a, a building of, um, of, of significance, an older building built in the late nineteenth century. So we should have a document for the building committee to look at, um, you know, whenever we get that meeting in place in mid-February.
Great. Is that it? Uh, community relations?
So for community relations, I'll be able to report and go on to other topics. Um, this was submitted by Barbara Davis. Uh, when schools were out at the library, it was full swing during the holiday vacation, over seven hundred participants enjoyed live performance, film, crafts, workshop, and the Mexican dance classes. Uh, the finale was our Three Kings Day event, which is to be performed by the Philpulley Mexican Dance Company, uh, which has been a longtime partner, and the children who had taken the classes, uh, many, many of them, I think all of them were residents here, uh, of, of New Rochelle. Um, the theater was filled to capacity, I actually was here with my daughter, it was pretty awesome. Uh, and the, uh, and fortunately several dozen people had to be turned away.
Oh.
And, uh, yeah, because, you know, fires here, fires in there, but, but there was several, several dozen people, fortunately, that had to be turned away. Um, this was sponsored by the New Rochelle Downtown Business District, which is big, family fun days, uh, since two thousand and six. Uh, we're, uh, hopeful that this partnership will continue in twenty twenty. Uh, regular weekly programming has resumed, uh, the children's department continues to add successful programs and receive praise with quality of these programs. Programs for babies in particular have struck a community core. In the teen room, uh, program system Luis Priseno has success, successfully initiated weekly three-D printing workshops.
That's cool.
Uh, I actually just spoke to, uh, Luis Priseno when we were upstairs. Uh, he's, he had some great ideas, I was speaking with him, uh, told me that he met with the Youth Bureau not too long ago about a program that used to exist called Higher Ant, and he's an alumni of that program. Uh, so I told him to speak to you, Tom.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, what his idea is, and to bring that to the table, because, like you said, with the budget, uh, coming up, if this is something that we as a board look to find, additional expands, and partnerships with the city Youth Bureau, um, that's something that we should look forward to. Um, he has started, uh, oh, he initiated, he initiated, we're finally putting this machine to use, a weekly three, three-D printing workshop. That's pretty interesting. Um, do you know the participant rate for that?
Um, I think it's probably about a half a dozen, which is actually fairly good for that printer. What we're, what we're actually thinking about doing is, um, moving that printer, three-D printer, which was, um, uh, given to us through the Foundation, down to children's institute, and, and training our staff to work with our younger children, and we're looking to purchase, um, a newer. Um, because this three-D printer is a few, is three years old, which in technological terms probably means.
A relic.
Yeah, relic dinosaur, um, but it can be used in the children's area, and Luis is, he's just doing a great job in all kinds of areas, and, you know, we have a new teen librarian, Rio Alsena, and there's a great new vibe in that room, and a lot of different levels.
Uh, so this month they also started a civic class for those preparing for naturalization tests, and three sessions after these afternoon classes are being taught by an attorney who is volunteering for Tom. Uh, as always, the full list of programs, materials, and services can be seen in our newsletter and in our website, uh, which is in the process, process of getting a refresh with new photos. Uh, our exterior and interior digital signs are also receiving attention. Coming up is a very exciting month-long, uh, exhibition relating the extraordinary story of the Charles Dickerson, Efe, Drum, and Buhu corpse, which was researched and written by Professor Robert Wester. Right? Uh, working with Barbara on a volunteer basis, he has done an excellent job capturing ninety years' history of the corpse. Uh, Black History Month program will carry a music theme that will include our annual Bhukand Day dance and drum classes and performance documentaries on gospel and on swing, and a performance by the Youth Tap Assembly along with other February vacation programs. So mark your calendars, the culminating event will be on Sunday, February twenty-third. There's no time for that, right? Last item, item, they are hosting, uh, the Middle School Research Science Fair this Saturday from two P M. From two P M to six P M, the science display and the competitive event will be on the spring in the lobby until next Friday. Um, also, I'll go to what, uh, Tom mentioned, I was at the meeting with, uh, Westchester Community Foundation and R X R. Barbara Davis was there, and pretty much, uh, R X R as the developers, uh, have set aside about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, for grants that is, uh, focused specifically on youth and targeted on youth. Uh, that can be an array of ideas and programming, from workforce development to training to youth development, to STEM-related activities, um, or correlation of youth, youth programs that help families, but at the end of the day, the ultimate goal is to help youth. Um, there, the grant process is like any typical, uh, grant process, you submit an application, a proposal, who, what, where, when, and what's the impacts with a budget. Um, uh, there is no matching, uh, uh, aspect that has to be incorporated in the grant. Um, however, um, there can be new programs that can be created from scratch, um, but it should demonstrate how you will sustain it in the future and, and, and the impact that it will have, or enhance programs that already exist. Um, they're encouraging, and I agree with this, uh, wholeheartedly, uh, to partner with organizations, uh, because many nonprofits in New Rochelle, um, we work in silos, uh, and it's because of how competitive it is. But this is an opportunity for a pocket of money that is specific for New Rochelle, New Rochelle youth, for these agencies to work, uh, together. So I'm hoping that these non-for-profit organizations, and they have to be five oh one C threes, uh, you can be a for-profit or organization. If you are a for-profit, you have to partner with a non-for-profit organization to be your fiscal sponsor. Um, and this is an opportunity for organizations to collaborate and really make a difference and an impact in seeing what programs are out there. From, uh, two thousand five hundred to fifty thousand dollars is the max. Um, so, um, you can't apply for the whole two.
Two hundred and fifty.
Fifty, which would be awesome, so, or even a hundred thousand, uh, but fifty thousand, um, can make a difference, can make an, um, impact. So I'm excited to see, I was, it was exciting to see organizations in the room, uh, the ones that are always there, and then new ones that are just like, you know, uh, who, who for this type of funding benefit these up-and-coming organizations that have small programs, like mentoring programs or, uh, clergy and churches can apply as well, but within their reporting, whether they have to explain their, their program.
Dan, I have a question about, um, the meeting this morning. Was there any mention made regarding, uh, conversations that I had heard previously about some sort of teen drop-in center in the space being vacated by Stop and Shop, there's gonna be an Accura, is it a Noonody dealership?
From what I heard and gathered, and it was posted, I believe, Noam posted this somewhere as well, that they're looking, it's not the Stop and Shop space, it's the space where Spencer's, um, Steiner Sports used to be, sorry, right across from Modell. Um, that's a vacant space, so there's a talk or an idea to put a Youth Bureau Center or Youth Center there, but I don't know what the process or what, what's inside.
Right.
So I don't know what.
But it wasn't mentioned at the meeting.
No, no, it, it, it wasn't, um, mentioned, I, I was surprised Youth Bureau was not at this.
They weren't at the meeting, oh.
Um, so, not sure.
I have a couple of questions, do we know, um, over what timeframe, I know there's a deadline.
Oh, yeah, so, so, um, the, the, the proposals are due before five o'clock, uh, or three o'clock, uh, January twenty-fourth. And they will review the proposals to start sometime in summer or spring. Um, they do, one question, uh, came up where someone said, well, I don't have programming in the summer, uh, can I start my programming in the fall? Yes, that is something that the, that they will consider, um, like I said, this is a very, I've, I've worked with Westchester Community Foundation in their own realm of proposals. This is a very, um, I gotta say, very easy and simple proposal, that it's making it just, just easy to, to be crea, creative. They have a ten maximum page, and they were like, just because you see ten, don't, don't, don't write ten pages, like, get to the point of where your proposal is. What's the program, what's, what's the impact? So it's, it makes it easier to kind of like, if you have four pages of your, um, go on. Um, they wanna know why that, that, why your program is going to exist, what's the impact, and what's the difference that you're thinking of making, and how are you gonna track it? And it's all about, uh, quantitative numbers, as well as the qualitative change, you know, the story behind the curve, that's, that's the new realm of youth development. Story behind the curve, right? Um, and then they're gonna look at it, oh, one of the cool things that R X, R X is also offering is a social, I forgot, they're a social corporate impact or assistance, so in other words, R X R has different departments, from legal teams to architects to, um, developers, to finance people. And they are willing to provide their services as well to organizations that may need the type of services. So I'll give you a perfect, a perfect example. Um, as, in my role and, and my a, agency, uh, I'm doing some construction work and repurposing, and they have provided some, some of their architect team completely for free to review my plans and give recommendations and go over stuff to make things suitable for that building, so that's awesome. So that's awesome, that, because that will cost any non-for-profit or agency a lot of money to move that stuff around. So they're offering those services to any organization, and that's coming up too, but they announced that. So I'm hoping that this is not just a one-shot deal of 250, and it's like, "All right, guys, we build our, we did our buildings, peace out." I really hope that they can sustain this moving forward.
And I think, and I had said this when I spoke with, I forget, David, that I was hoping that, you know, first of all, this is the right thing for them to be doing. They're investing in our community, they're profiting a lot from being here, and they should give back to the community on a regular basis. And I really stressed that I hoped that it would inspire other developers to pitch in, that this should be a revolving fund. And when they provide these kinds of ancillary services to help streamline the grant process, not only in, you know, applications and appropriateness of the proposal, but in the administration of it and the follow-through, that you're actually passing skills to people. So, you know, the process itself is a learning process. And I, you know, I think it's, you know, we may not love what they're doing, but this is, this is a good thing.
Yeah, and I'm really happy that they're partnering, that it's not them running it.
Right.
It's the Westchester Community.
That's right.
Foundation, which is a sister, sister, I guess, sector of the New York Communities.
Well, yeah, they're like a big, they're a big foundation, right?
And they have a Long Island Community Foundation, so they're part of that. And they have years of experience in not only nonprofit grant management and giving out funds, but they also do wealth management to those individuals, that's why I saw that, that wanted to do that. So, so that's exciting. So we'll see what happens with that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And the last piece is, there's a fantastic, amazing event coming up on January twentieth, with the fortieth annual Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Drumade Award Memorial Breakfast. And the reason that I'm highlighting this is that there's a special someone in the audience, Ms. Dorothy Oliver, who's here in all of our meetings, almost all of our meetings, right?
Most, if not all.
And she is, and she is receiving the Napoleon Holmes Award. So congratulations. And our former colleague, who sat here with us not too long ago, who is now a counselor, is our keynote speaker, who is, who is the keynote speaker for the event. So hopefully you can all attend. I'll be there, so I'll see you guys.
You'll be there.
Well, but what is worse, if Rota is sponsoring this as well?
Oh, good. Nice, nice.
Very good.
Well, thank you, thank you. Finance, Chuck is the chair of finance, and he's not here. So we will, he didn't leave me with anything. I don't have anything for personnel.
Does Policy have anything? We haven't reviewed any additional, and we now are down a...
Person.
A person, so, but we haven't had anything else to review. We passed a lot last meeting, so. Great. It's good we can run on our fumes until the next meeting.
Okay. And special committee, so we need that too?
That's me also. So, yeah, who else I need? I can't multitask. Yeah, so Public Works Partners was our selected consultant for the needs assessment, the community needs assessment. We, I finally got in contact with them. Their proposal was submitted in March of 2019, so first I needed to confirm that they were still interested and had the bandwidth and workload capacity to take us on, and they said they were absolutely still interested. They are submitting a revised proposal early next week, and we will circulate that. And then, you know, we had talked about making sure we keep everyone apprised of the process. So I'm hoping, I'm hoping Monday, Tuesday, next week, we will get the revised proposal. We can, you know, post it online and share it with everybody, and then we would meet with them. There's a kickoff meeting, that's, that's, you know, the first bullet on their task number one. They wanted to revise dates and just make sure that everything was in line with what we still wanted to accomplish. And so next time we should have more to report. Hopefully, again, we'll hopefully be able to meet before the next board meeting or else have something, you know, lined up. And that's it.
Is that all for special?
That's, I think so. I don't have anything else.
The courtyard project, the surveyor did, Beatty and Watson did complete their work. We sent the information off to the foundation. Have not heard from the foundation. I was hoping to have a report, an update.
I think they're waiting to meet with you guys, with you and Chuck, I think. Yeah, but, so Chuck's gonna reach out to you, I think? Talk to Chuck, I think. Not a hundred percent certain, but I think they're still waiting.
That, because I, I was told that we would get it.
Oh, well, maybe not.
Something, just an update, like where it stood.
An update, okay.
Right, because they needed the survey, because they couldn't attach costs to a variety of elements until they had the survey. The landscape architect could make decisions based on what she learned. And as far as the broadcast system, it's up, it's functional. We have our social media coordinator, Manning the con up there. We actually are waiting for the check from the city to pay for it. So hopefully we'll, too delayed, oh, yes, absolutely. That's it.
Okay. I do want to mention one great thing. It's not great. I am, it's not, I mean, it's, it's just, it's another wonderful thing our library does. I was doing something, and I downloaded this new application, which is old to most people. I'm into listening to books in my, as I'm a bus driver for my kids. And so I listen to books all the time, and we have this service, what's it called, Libby or Libby? That you can use instead of going to Audible or some other...
Overdrive, Cloud Library, Canopy?
Huh?
Linda.
It's not, you clearly, I'm the only one using it. It is called Libby, L-I-V-B-Y, and you can actually... Yes, Libby, search for a book, and you can get your books. This is why it's good. Have you used it? And you can, so you can get even current books just with having a library card. So yet again, it's actually through Westchester Library System, which I want to say, I know that we are concerned with a lot of the...
Evergreen.
Yeah, evergreen, and, but they do provide a lot of services. So this, and this really wasn't supposed to be a thing about WS, but they do provide a lot of services, but Libby is one of them. So I suggest if you guys do any, listen to any books, don't use Audible or those ones you have to pay for, use Libby.
Library, that's right.
You didn't know?
I mean, I know we have lots of e-audiobooks, but I'm not...
I'm glad Dan's used it, because otherwise you guys would think I'm lying.
I think you're lying.
You guys were like, what are you doing?
Information to the people.
Well, it is now time for public comment. Okay, so first we have Lourdes Font. Happy New Year. Joanne, why is there? Okay, we saw, I'm sorry. You, can you, do you mind coming up here?
You can come up. It's like a living room, isn't it? Where's the coffee?
We're always ready for a little entertainment.
Yeah, no, I think also, like, it's very encouraging to hear you. I was kind of alarmed when somebody told me, "You know, they're thinking of building a building over the library, and it's gonna ruin the library," and she's seen it happen at other libraries, where libraries get smaller and smaller. And I just think, like, the developers have gone mad with this town, and what about parking? What about quality of life and air and sunlight? So I'm really happy that you're, you know, really onto all this and working on it. The only suggestion I would have, well, Valerie, I forgot her last name, is on the board. She's in my building, Seventy Locust. She's a pretty new member, and...
Well, the Board of Education, Valerie Williams?
Yeah, I guess that's right. I'm sorry, I'm getting confused with the city council.
Well, sure.
Oh, yeah, getting all confused. All right, never mind. And also, I've been, right, with a friend of mine, we've been doing a minute of silence, promoting that at the board meetings for years already. But, no, I was just gonna say, maybe some of the money that you got from the friends at the library should go to publicity, a lawyer. I don't know how that works with the city council, and how, is any of you talking to the mayor? Because it's crazy, what's, you know, it's gonna ruin this town if they keep just developing, developing without, without being conscious of, you know, the history and the, what's important to the people who live here. And the library is very important, so I thank you all for your service. And I'm very heartened by your word of heard tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dorothy?
Can I stand here, 'cause I can pull up the ladder?
Should she turn around? I mean...
I think you're Dorothy, I hate to, you're, given that you're an honoree, we want your comments to be available to the, to the city of New Rochelle, all of yours.
First of all, Happy New Year and a Happy New Year to each and every one of you. My concern is that the building that you're talking about on Main Street and Memorial, I went to...
She says, yes, thumbs up, yes.
Oh, so... The building that you're talking about on Main Street that they're going to tear down. I was talking to Aragon, who's head of development here, and the building, he told me, isn't going to start on that building until 2021. Because I have a friend who has a hairdresser there, and I was talking to him about her concerns. The other thing is, they are deliberately trying to force you to sell this, because they're deliberately setting up building that causes shadows, that will cause the shadows that will block out this building and the light that comes to it. There's two twenty-eight-story buildings that are proposed across the street, and plus the building on Main Street and Memorial. So please, don't just take their word, just stay on them and, you know, hold them to pass. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan McMillar?
I'm also gonna pass, but first just appreciate all that you're accomplishing, you so far in this year.
Thank you. Marjorie Sax?
Happy New Year to everybody. I want to really appreciate the board and Director Giaffino for your eliminating the fees for the juvenile, yeah. And to hear the data and to hear that story is just really the power of, of an action like that. So I just want to appreciate all of you for that. I also really support Beth, when you were bringing up the cumulative, you know, really looking at the cumulative impact of the developer, all these developments, that it could mean shadows all day long. And the idea, again, that they didn't, they only did a shadow study for Ruby D Park for these two gigantic buildings. And I also really appreciate and support your idea that it is a new city council. I think it's more women now than men on the city council. I'm not sure what that means, but it's a, it is something. And it does, it does mean that zoning is up for grabs now. And don't blame, and so that could be a positive thing, that they really could limit the number of high-rise buildings. They could really look at the cumulative impact of all the buildings that are already up and already in progress of going up for shadows, traffic, wind, all the things that you're mentioning. And that you as a board really do have, you have power. I mean, you have a power as a board of the library, and you have political power, and you have a community, you know, really supporting you in so many ways behind that, and we want to be supporting you in this. So don't blame the messenger that zoning can also go in a bad way. And there have been people high up in the city who are talking about additional zoning for even more units and more high-rise buildings. So again, please don't blame the messenger, but I believe that that is a risk, and I believe that there are people high up in the city who want that to happen. So not only would we be getting the buildings that they're proposing now, but there could be more. So just please be aware of that and let us know if we can support you in that effort as well. And the last thing is, in terms of the application for the, you know, appointing a person, I just, again, would think it's really important to make sure that this is somebody who loves the library, who supports the library staying in this building where it is in its own building. You never know, you know, you can have a lot of conspiracy theories about who might be applying and what their intentions are, and just please be mindful as you're, you know, interviewing these people to make sure it's somebody who really loves this library and will do whatever they can to protect it, you know, along with all of you. So, thank you.
Thank you, Marjorie. Is there anyone else? No, there's no one else. Here, okay. There's no one else, again. Guess what? That is the end. I make a motion to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those oppose? The meeting is adjourned.
She's already got 2020 in a bag.
I love doing that.
A powerful bag.